I'd like to call this Celine City Council Meeting to order. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, first off, it's with deep regret that I feel compelled to acknowledge the untimely passing of our library director, Leslie Needhammer, who was also the wife of our mayor pro tem, David Rhodes, who passed away this past week after a pretty courageous fight with cancer. In addition to being the library director, Leslie's got her fingerprints on so many things in this community. She was on our Environmental Commission, active with CQC, Celine Leadership, just to name a few. She will be greatly missed. She's a pretty, was a pretty iconic Celinean, and hopefully her legacy and example will inspire many in this community for years to come. So at this time, I would ask for a moment of silence in memory of Leslie Needhammer. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Girbaugh, Seo, McClellan, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, city treasurer Bennett, DPW director Fordice, police chief Rennick, business ambassador Korfman. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, we appreciate you coming, and we would encourage you to sign in in the back to my left. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended. There are several changes tonight. Per staff's recommendation, I have been asked to remove new business item 16-58, that's the Lexible Policy and Risk Management Resources. There's still some outstanding questions, and interestingly enough, our attorney, our chief legal counsel, Scott Smith, will be present next Monday, and he'll be able to address several of those. So if there's no objection, that would be removed from tonight's agenda and added as an unfinished business item at our next meeting, which is a week from today on the 21st. Also, and this is my mistake for missing this, but just an organizational thing, I'd like to add new business item 16-61. It involves personal property, IFT. I'd like to add that as the first item under New Business. That way, our business ambassador, unless she chooses to stay, can leave following the two action items that directly relate to her responsibilities. So we would move from the Lee Bear Aerospace IFT directly to that. And then I believe in the Lee Bear Aerospace IFT, there are some sections that are blank because at the time the agenda was printed and distributed, the clerk did not have all those details. I believe you do now, Clerk Royal. Do you want to read those? There are four blank spots.
Yes. The first one, it says exemption certificate in the amount of $6,180,000 for real property for a period of nine years, and $4,110,000 for personal property for a period of six years.
Is everyone clear on that? Okay. That's all I have. Are there any other additions to the agenda this evening? No, then I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Thank you, councilmember Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Dillon. Hearing nothing further, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion to excuse the absence of mayor pro tem, David Rhodes? Moved by Girbaugh, that's seconded by Tahar.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor of excusing the absence signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We have one presentation this evening, and I'm delighted to welcome Dennis Kittle from the Environmental Commission to share with us their 2015 annual report. I believe we also have Mr. McVeigh, who's a member of that commission as well. We appreciate you being here, gentlemen. The floor is yours, and remember, it's, well, it should be illuminated behind me, and it will also be on the TV to my left.
Thank you, Mayor Morrow. Hi, good evening. I'm Dennis Kittle, I'm Environmental Commission chairman for 2016. Thank you for having us for the presentation. 2015 members, look back at last year, and this is a review of last year's activities. Last year, Bruce Westlake was our chairman, who taught me well, I learned a lot from Bruce. Vice chairpersons were John Price, myself. Of course, we mentioned David Rhodes. Bob Skell is our city staff liaison. Connie Dehan is our secretary. Leslie Needameyer, which you've already recognized and we're going to sorely miss on this commission, also served last year. Mary Hess, myself, Luke Sherberg, and Michael McVeigh, who's also here with me tonight. Last year, our changes to the commission, myself and Luke joined the commission in early 2015, so it was my first year. John Price moved out of the city, unfortunately. He was gladly to have been hired in Bellevue and took the position in Bellevue and moved. That required him to leave our commission. He did a really nice job for us, but we got replaced by Michael. It was good to get a new member. Michael McVeigh joined in mid-2015. Our responsibilities for the commission, our community awareness, that's our number one responsibility. We also serve on the River Raisin Watershed, the Celine River Greenway Alliance. We have a special projects commission, and we make recommendations to city council. Our highlights for last year, electronics e-waste, that continues to be our number one activity for the commission. This is our 11th e-waste event. We are increasing the use of Facebook and the Celine posts to share ideas and increase public awareness. We continue with public service announcement videos to educate citizens about plastic codes, rain barrels, textiles, and small appliance recycling activities. We added Christmas lights this year, Christmas light recycling. This is a big issue with our, what we call our MRFs, our areas where we separate recycling. When people put these into our barrels, into our collection barrels, they get wrapped up in the equipment. They bind it up, and they shut down the sorting equipment. So this is a big thing to get these redirected and out of the waste stream. We certainly don't want them to be thrown away, so we took on a recycling collection here. Parting with the Celine Parks and Recreation areas to work with the Eagle Scouts, the Girl Scouts, projects at Mill Pond Park, we're able to help them find some sponsorship and get some projects going. We also worked closely with the Celine Public Schools Commission, with stationing commission members and volunteers in the elementary schools. The schools took on a program where they would have a zero-waste week. It was quite a little event, and they taught students all week about recycling, zero-waste, including composting. So we volunteered during lunch hour to coordinate students to help them recycle and place compost in the correct bins. In that effort, we're also able to align a company called Dart up in Mason, Michigan, who is a manufacturer of styrofoam. They have a recycling program. This is one of the biggest issues the schools had last year, was styrofoam trays from their school lunch program. So we were able to align Dart for the pickup and take these styrofoam trays to be recycled and made into rulers and picture frames and plastic molding at the baseboards. So that was quite a nice, unexpected return. They took 14 large garbage bags a week away from the landfill. So they were able to recycle all those, and we'll talk about some of these in detail a little bit more. We're also wanting to start a new initiative to reach preschool aged children with the habits of recycling, and we want to do more in that area, so we've initiated those discussions last year. We provided plastic sorting games at the Celine Summer Fest as part of that initiation, and we also recommended the city on the microbead issue last year. Some of our key metrics, this is a report put out by our Celine City Trash and Recycling Report, showing how we're doing year after year, 2010, 2015. While we look at the numbers in graph form, what we're seeing is a reduction, actually, in materials collected in the city of Celine. We went from 3,900 tons down to 3,100 tons. We see a net material reduction to landfills, and nicely, we see an uptick in recyclables. Now, the top graph, the top line that we see, is a total gross collected. So overall, we're collecting less, and we're recycling more. Yard waste is flat. So a 22% reduction 2010 to 2015 for overall pickup, a 34% reduction in landfill, and a 20% increase in recyclables. The recycling statistics in tons are shown, and in 2015, that equated to 1.8 million pounds of recycling materials. And when we look at this, we look at this per resident, and why we're seeing less, I think, less material, we're seeing that, I think we're seeing an overall reduction overall in just general usages. Newspapers are down, bottles are lighter, packaging is lighter, so materials, so I think it's natural to see. But just as a double check, we put a graph together per resident, and we put it per resident to the 2010 census, and also, there's some figures on the estimated population. In both cases, they match the same trend. So even per residents, we're seeing the same percentage in reduction. Per residents, we're seeing the same reduction in landfill. Yard waste, again, is flat, at 3%, so we're seeing total, but we're also still seeing that 20% increase in recyclables by weight. And what this means is it comes back down to a diversion rate, which means how much are we collecting, and how much are we really recycling? And what we see is from 2010 to 2015, we see a 29% to 41% diversion rate, that's a 40% increase in materials that we're diverting from the landfill to a recycling outfit. So that's a really nice figure to see, and we hope that our communication has helped that in Celine. We also started Simply Recycling last year in 2015. This is brought forward to the commission, we discussed and brought back to the council and the city. The Simply Recycling effort is not a duplication of other recycling or collections, but it takes textiles out of the waste stream. So we all have seen that, starting in September 28th of 2015, residents received a green bag, textiles and some other items can be collected in that green bag. And what we're seeing as a result, October, the first month, we saw almost 5,000 pounds, and each month after, about one ton, 2,000 pounds of materials collected. So this is an addition to the figures that I showed earlier, and not included also being One of our biggest activities for the year is the Spring E-Waste Collection Day. This year, it'll be on April 30th. Last year, we collected 13,361 pounds of waste. That compares, that's down from last year, that compares to 34,000 we collected in 2014. We also collected $852 in donations to the Fifth Corner. The collection weight is down, 2015, 20,000 pounds compared to prior year, mostly because we had to eliminate CRTs and TVs. These are getting very, very difficult to recycle. It's very costly to recycle them, and the e-waste recyclers are not collecting these items. So we were unable to accept them in our event. Last year, we collected 14,000 pounds of just the CRTs and television sets. So that accounts, 14,000 accounts for the 20,000 pound difference from the year before. We also see the electronics category just getting smaller, electronics are getting smaller, so that's also contributing to the waste. So pounds are probably not the way to measure this as a metric going forward, so we started collecting vehicle counts. We want to see what the participation is. We had 161 vehicles, that equates to about 83 pounds per vehicle as one of the metrics. We also had 15 volunteers, it was great participation, and we gave out lilac seedings for Earth Day. For people who participated, they received a lilac seeding, seedling, I should say. We also participate in the Celine Cleanup Day, which is a county event, and the county event takes more than the Celine e-waste. Celine e-waste is just e-waste. Celine Cleanup Day is household waste, electronics, tires, steels, foam, cardboard, anything you can carry in for this event. When we look at last year's compared to this year's, we're also, we've got some mixed metrics here. Total pounds of electronics went up in 2015 by 15%. We saw household chemicals, a little bit flat, down 6.5%. Free-on appliances were about the same, and our total weight was 41,914, went down a little bit, 5.5% to 39,000. But we had more participation, so we had 316 participants and vehicles. Last year, we had 450 this year. So we collected less per vehicle this year. We had more people come in and participate, we collected less pounds per vehicle. But the important things here is we still took out 21,000 pounds of household waste out of the, anything that could be thrown into the garbage or landfill, we collected, and we diverted more electronics waste with this event. So some of the numbers are up, participation is up. We made it a point at our farmer's market to really pass out, make people aware of this event coming up, because it does include so many things that are hard to recycle. We also run here at City Hall, the community collection involvement. We have the Red Barrel for prescription drugs to be, so to avoid them from being placed in the toilet, or flushed, or thrown into the landfill. 292 pounds of pills were collected last year. Since the beginning, we've collected 772.5 pounds of pills to divert. We also continue with the battery collection. This is really one of the biggest things we use. We don't have a real good metric here. They're very heavy, so we don't weigh them, but we do collect a number of buckets of just batteries, that are not reusable batteries. We also collect cell phones. We take these to the armed services for collection. We had equal participation last year, two full boxes were collected. That was equal to 2014. This is the first year, as I mentioned before, we've done Christmas light recycling, so 370 pounds, five pounds of strings were collected and recycled. We also run the Lend a Light program, where we lend light bulbs to people to try and businesses. These are the LED light bulbs to help them convert. They don't know how they're going to look. We have light bulbs that we can lend them, they can use them for a month, and then decide what type of lights they like for that. We had three businesses that converted to LED lighting with this program last year. The school involvement, this is the Dart Business Truck. So as I mentioned before, that Celine Environmental Commission members were stationed at the elementary schools for that week, where we helped the children, helped the students divert the recycling, put them in the right barrels, explain what recycling is. They worked on composting, it was a really nice event. And this is where we really redirected these large bags of foam trays into the truck. Dart was nice enough to come down that day at the end of the week. They came in Friday, students helped us load everything in, load it in the truck, we took it for a recycling event. The nice thing about this is Rex Cleary of the school system then participated the following year. He's the one who contacted them, kept it going, so we're keeping this going all year in the school system. So not only was it an annual, just one-time event, this is now part of the school system for recycling. The Summer Fest, started at a tent, this has been a participation each year, but this year, we took a recycling game, where you had a little pool full of all recycled materials, gave the kids a little treat for putting them in the right bins. It was a lot of fun for the day. The public information formats that we're using as part of the commission, the FYI for sure, for the quarterly water bill, we post each quarter, Wasting Water, How I Live My Life, Celine Where to Recycle, and the Celine Be Green Recycling Challenge, where there are articles last year. We continue with our Celine Post Environmental Blogs. This has been a nice way to get to the community and tell them of events, tell them of what we want for recycling, things that have changed. And then we also use the Celine Public Service Announcements on Channel 18. The Red Barrel, the e-waste, recycling compost, informational things in the lobby, and the rain barrel assembly instructions, and then we're going for the Simply Recycling next. And these will recycle through periodically. We also use Celine Be Green as a website, and we have a Facebook page. We keep up with all the recent postings and the events in the Facebook page, and the website is also, has all of our information, and there's links with the county system as well as the post. In 2016 going forward, I'll be chairing the commission this year. Bruce Westlake is our vice chairman. David Rhodes continues as our city council representative. Our city liaison, staff liaison is Bob Skell, secretary Connie Dehan. We have a new member, Liz Hilgrin. Leslie, of course, is a continued member of our commission, and again, we're going to greatly miss Leslie's participation. Michael, his second year, is coming here, and then Luke is old as well. We're going to be basically running the same events. One of the things we're going to add is movies in the park. We're going to take our recycling activity before the movie and get more children involved in a recycling game. We're also going to look at the Michigan Recycling Coalition. This is a statewide system where we can get more ideas. So last meeting, we voted to join the commission, the coalition, and for a newsletter, we'll see what other cities are doing in Michigan. We'll absolutely kind of get into the groove of both the state, best ideas, best practices, those types of things, so we hope that will also add to our events for '16. And then we look at our strengths and weaknesses, and what we have for the commission going for 2016. Really think the commission's the depth of expertise, the dedication, the enthusiasm, the participation of finding members. We see a lot of people come up to us, especially in the farmer's market, where we are once a month, we see a lot of questions, and we see a lot of interest. So we think that's a really good strength, of participation. The public information is turning out real well. We're getting more and more hits on the blog, we're getting more and more hits on the Facebook page. So we're going to continue that further marketing, we think that's a real strength. Ann Arbor being close to us, and their expertise is the strength of ours, and the support from this council is certainly a strength. Weaknesses, citizens, keeping up with the fundamentals. This is going to be a hard year for recycling. We do see a downtrend in recycling. We see a downtrend in prices for what's collected in that market, is really becoming depressed. There's a lot of news out there of even glass not being recycled any longer. And so we have to keep up the good work, the communication and the fundamentals, get good, clean recycling, and overcome that weakness. We also don't know if we're really recognizing the community, our name recognition, trying to get out there more and more with coordination in the committees. We really don't have any authority, we're there as a group to really communicate the fundamentals, but we'll continue to work on our name recognition in the community. We've got an increased volunteer pool. We've got the Volunteer Fair coming up as an opportunity. Citizen education is an opportunity. Partnering with the public schools, we want to do that more. Continued education of all the students. The Michigan Recycling Organization is an opportunity for us in 2016, and we hope to find some really good ideas for communication in that organization. Threats, budget cuts are always threats. Changes in city leadership for the vision and purpose of the commission is probably an ongoing threat. And then just the significant downtrend in the recyclables market is a threat to our, I think, just our efforts as a community. So that's something, again, we're just going to have to over-communicate for 2016. So that's our annual report. Are there any questions?
It's very thorough, thank you, Dennis. Michael, did you want to add anything before I open it up for questions?
Nothing except to say this is a wonderful and dynamic group. I'm quite happy to be a part of that.
Wonderful. We're happy to have you as a part of it. Questions from the dais. Mr. Girbaugh.
Just curious, you know, you said that CRTs and TV sets are being picked up. What's the alternative for us? Is the city still picking them up?
Yes, we're doing it at the September event. The September event is picking them up. We also identified a few local, other local e-waste. Ann Arbor picked up CRTs as well. And you can also drop them off at the Ann Arbor Recycling Center, but there's a cost.
Got it.
Yep.
Mr. Seo.
Did I hear you say that glass is not going to be recycled any longer?
Well, there's a downturn, there's a downturn. Glass, with energy costs being down and natural gas prices suppressed down, it's cheaper, more economical to make new glass than it is to collect, ship, and recycle glass. So what we're seeing is a beginning of communities who are no longer recycling glass. The Western Washington County Recycling Effort reported that they're no longer picking up glass. University of Michigan also is not recycling glass any longer, and it's thrown out. So we're seeing it, we're seeing that, you can pick up reports across the country where the glass is starting to go back in the landfills and not being placed in our recycling barrels. So it's a trend, and this is one of the materials we all think is highly recyclable, but it's just a cost, and it's just a market situation. And we're seeing that in plastics as well. Pittsfield stopped taking number sixes, number threes, and number fours out of the recycle bins. Our contract with Waste Management says that they have to collect all seven. We're a little concerned if they don't have any place to put it, they're just going to collect it and place it into the landfill. So we, as a community, are going to continue to recycle, collect those things in our bins, but we have to watch this market trend.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have one other comment, though.
Please, and then Ms. Dillon.
In the University of Michigan statistics, there are two things that were kind of interesting and outstanding. One was, it was just interesting to see they stopped recycling glass. Number two, glass was only 1% of their collectibles. So with plastic taking over a lot of the container market and beverages, glass is also not becoming a large percentage. So hopefully, that diversion rate trend will continue.
Ms. Dillon, did you have a question or comment?
I do, I just have a quick question. I'm sorry, what does HHW stand for?
Household Waste.
Household Waste, which includes...
Yeah, cleaners, everything that you would have a hard time recycling, cleaners, paints, solvents, those types of things.
Thank you.
Anything else from the group? Well, Dennis, Michael, thank you again. I understand, Dennis, from our brief conversation prior to the meeting this evening, that the former chair, current vice chair, Bruce Westlake, helped with the PowerPoint.
Yes, he did.
Be sure to thank him for us, it was very, very well done, very professional.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we move on now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment and question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve is submitted.
Been moved by Tahar to approve the consent agenda as submitted, is her second.
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Dillon. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearings. Item 16-57, this is Lee Bear Aerospace IFT. First motion will be a motion to open the public hearing at 7:59 PM.
Move to open.
Moved by Girbaugh, is her second.
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Seo. All those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Affording anyone from the public an opportunity to speak on this issue.
Mayor, I don't know if it's appropriate right now, but I just wanted to say that I may have a slight conflict of interest with this. I do contract with them from time to time, so I just wanted to make everybody on the dais aware of that.
Very good.
I've discussed it with Mr. Campbell, and he talked to attorneys and said it shouldn't be an issue, but just wanted to bring it up.
We appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Thank you, councilwoman.
I'll move to close the open meeting.
Moved by Girbaugh to close the public hearing at, I think it's still 7:59 PM.
Circle.
Was that seconded again by Seo? Thank you, sir. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Final motion on this item, this agenda item, will be a motion... Final motion on this item, this agenda item will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to approve the resolution approving application for Liebherr Aerospace for industrial facilities exemption certificate in the amount of $6,180,000 for real property for the amount of nine years and $4,110,000 for personal property for a period of six years, subject to the terms and provisions of the tax abatement agreement to be entered into by the applicant with the City of Saline and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said tax abatement agreement as presented.
Move to approve, adopt, and authorize.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dillon. Is her second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Seal. Business Ambassador Corfman, do you care to make any comment? And then we'll, we of course would welcome any thoughts from Wolf Cave representing the applicant.
Staff reviewed the application and took it to the Special Projects Commission. In recognition of Liebherr's time in the community, the Special Projects Commission awarded 30 bonus points to the original real and personal property guideline calculations. The extra bonus points added one year to the real property portion for a total of nine years. There was a clerical error in item number two of the personal property guidelines and that error added another 51 points to their personal property score. That combined with the bonus points added two years to the personal property for a total of six years. The Special Projects Commission also approved awarding additional points to Liebherr if their ISO 14001 certification was comparable to either lead or green globes. The ISO 14001 looks at how environmentally friendly the business operates, whereas lead and green globes looks at the environmentally friendly resources that were used in the construction of the building. Liebherr did give us some information about their building and we compared that to the lead and green globes and we found that some items were comparable. So we determined that they would have probably gotten a level one lead, which gave them another 25 points on the calculation for the real property. Unfortunately, that wasn't enough to bump them up one more year, so we are only recommending that the abatement be for nine years for the real property and six years for the personal property. And we have Mr. Faber here from Liebherr and he will give you a brief overview of Liebherr and their construction project.
I apologize, Joe. My mistake. We welcome you this evening.
Good evening, thank you. So a few words about our expansion. So most of you have probably seen the building go up on the old layer property between Maple and Woodland. So we're adding 37,000 square foot of aerospace repair activity as we've done before. It's in essence an extension of what we've done. We call it light manufacturing because it involves skilled trade, welding, tasks of this nature. What's new for us this time, if you have been to our facility, so far we've been doing maintenance and repair of aircraft and helicopter parts for the US market from Canada all the way down to Central America. What's new about this one is it's what we call a center of excellence. We will do the maintenance worldwide, so we'll be repairing parts for aircraft flying in China, in Europe, and here in the US. So there's a unique opportunity also for Saline to repair something which otherwise would be exported, so it's actually quite great. So we will create about 30 jobs in the next couple of years as the business will grow. We plan on moving in the April timeframe, so you see a lot of construction going on right now. A few things maybe about the construction itself, so the entrance, the main activity will come from Woodland. So the drive we have built from Maple is mostly for the construction right now to get the trucks in and out. There will be a gate, so we'll be gated off to prevent drag racing at night and things like this, you know, we know the kids. So it will be quiet, there's no shift work, there's no stamping, it's quiet for the neighborhood which is adjacent to that, that's also important. There's no light pollution or anything like this, so we really took care of the environmental concerns of the citizens living in that area. Many of us live there as well, so it's quite good for ourselves. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the group either for our guest or for Business Ambassador Corfman? That was easy enough. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Any subsequent discussion? Mr. Gearbaugh, please.
Just real quick, the Special Projects Commission felt it was important to recognize Liebherr's tenure in our city and also the ability for the other aspect of, we changed the point scale and so forth, to recognize this lead capability because I think that's one of the things we've really pushed for is the idea of improved construction that leads to energy conservation or improved environmental aspects. So it was unanimous that the board approved that additional aspect for the additional year savings.
Very good. Mr. Tahar and then Mr. Seal.
Yes, excuse me. So this doesn't speak to points being awarded, but I think it's also important to recognize that Liebherr has been a really excellent community partner and contributor and supporter and that's appreciated as well.
Mr. Seal.
And I was going to expand on that just a little bit, in particular with the Saline-Lindenberg sister city relationship. You've always been a very integral part of any activities that we've been involved with with Lindenberg and we very much appreciate that as well. Thank you.
I just want to say that I have contracted with them a few times to do the photography work for a lot of their grand opening events and PR things and it's just an awesome place. So that's probably why I feel more comfortable abstaining from this, just because I have worked with them before, but.
Okay. Anything further? Well, let me just echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I was contacted by some of Joe's colleagues when this project was first initiated and it's been, it's been really impressive to watch how quickly the company moves on something that they think will be beneficial. But of equal importance, I think this expansion and future expansions will be beneficial to the Saline community. And as has been, and it has been stated by Councilwoman Tahar and of course by Councilwoman Seal, this is a really valued corporate citizen. And so we appreciate the additional investment, we appreciate your commitment to Saline, and we look forward to working with you and continuing to be an advocate and a partner. So thank you again and thank you for your work on this, Ms. Corfman. Any subsequent discussion on the motion? No, that's been properly moved by Dillon, seconded by Seal to approve and adopt or not to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. We move on to new business item 16-61. This is revocation of personal property IFT Kunstorf Technik Share Trier. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 10th, 2016 memo from Business Ambassador Corfman and to approve or not to approve the revocation of personal property portion of Kunstorf Technik Share Trier USA Incorporated for IFT Certificate number 2006335 in the amount of $659,049. IFT Certificate 2009010 in the amount of $26,403. And IFT Certificate 2009341 in the amount of $617,398. And finally, IFT Certificate 2012436 in the amount of $336,000.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh is her second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Ms. Corfman, do you want to discuss your memo of March the 10th?
Sure. When Windsor Mould acquired Share Trier, they did not request that the full amount of their IFTs transfer to them. Part of the reasoning was, and I'm just drawing a blank here, that it was either obsolete, they couldn't use it in the lines that they were going to run, which were very similar to Share Trier, but the equipment quite didn't satisfy what they needed, so they didn't take it. This resulted in these IFTs remaining on the state of Michigan's tax rolls. It's zero on the City of Saline's tax rolls, but in order to remove it from the state, we have to give them a resolution requesting that they revoke them.
Very good. Any questions for our Business Ambassador? No questions?
No.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by McClellan to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Corfman. We move on to new business item 16-59. This is FY17 operating in capital budgets for the Saline Area Fire Department. The first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 15th memo from Treasurer Bennett regarding the fire department fiscal year 2017 operating in capital budgets and to approve or not to approve the proposed Saline Area Fire Department operating in capital improvement budgets for fiscal year 2016, 2017 in the amount of $409,992 and to recommend that the Saline Area Fire Board adopt or not adopt said budgets.
Move to acknowledge receipt to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Ms. Bennett, do you care to make any comment? Not unless there are questions?
No.
Fair enough. Are there any questions for our city treasurer? No questions, any subsequent discussion? Please, Mr. Gearbaugh.
The only concern I had when looking at the budget, and this isn't necessarily for the city, but it would be for the fire board to consider, is the amount in the budget that's identified for potential benefit, retirement benefits and so forth. I raised that concern a couple of years ago and looking at this, the fact that we're doubling the size of the department and that the budget only increased $25,000, is $25,000 and did not increase associated with that, I am concerned, like we are for the city, of the potential liabilities for retiree benefits and so forth.
Okay, that seems reasonable between myself and Ms. Dillon. We can make a note of that and bring that up at the next fire board meeting. In fact, I think I need to bring that up at the next fire board meeting because Ms. Dillon will be absent, but I will, I will get some clarification on that, Mr. Gearbaugh, and have the chief or someone from the department provide some sort of response, not only to you but to council.
And I know the minimum rate is basically based upon our actuarial and so forth, but as we look at this more and more, the fact that we made this a big of a change, I think there needs to be a consideration.
Yep, I agree. So if that group meets again, I'll probably make contact with the chief and/or staff of the fire department in advance of our next meeting, but that group meets the first Wednesday in April.
And I think I'll be there as an alternate.
Yes, you will. So actually, you know what, you can bring it up.
There you go.
I didn't think of that. My apologies. So between you and I, Ms. Dillon, we can get clarification for the group on that. Anything else, Mr. Gearbaugh?
No.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion? No, then let's proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by McClellan to acknowledge, to approve, and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-60. This is special assessment resolution for the Saline Area Fire Department. This will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt resolution number one, special assessment for fire protection 2016, 2017, setting a public hearing on Monday, May 2nd, 2016, to hear and consider any objections to the city's proposed share of the fire protection in the amount of $409,992 for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. I'm assuming Ms. Bennett this requires.
I would just like to say that this point, I mean, we haven't had a budget set down with councils to decide at what, which option we're going to take, so it's best to pursue this. The proposed budget will cost over the $1,000,000 that has been allocated by the voters to special assess, so either way, it will be coming out of the general fund to some extent.
Okay, and of course, we'll discuss this, I'm sure, at one of our budget work meetings, probably in April. This is just setting the date to allow the public to comment on this issue. Any subsequent discussion from the dais? No? Okay, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the last action item of the evening, which is new business item 16-62, project contract number 155566, US 12 Reconstruction Project. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 9th, 2016 memo from City Manager Campbell and City Superintendent Engineer Rubel and to approve or not to approve contract number 155566 between the Michigan Department of Transportation MDOT and the City of Saline for grant funding participation of the US 12 Reconstruction Project and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the contract and project resolution.
I'll move to acknowledge the receipt for discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. So this will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 9th, 2016 memo from City Manager Campbell and Engineer Rubel. We'll end right there. Mr. Campbell, do you want to go over your memo of March the 9th?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this agreement that MDOT has given us to consider is all boilerplate, it's, and there's, as you know, it's standard procedure, we have our city attorney's office review our agreements and this is very similar to ones that I've utilized in other communities for this, virtually this very same project. In Scott Smith's words, there's, I mean, you're not going to change anything, right, wrong, or indifferent, but, so this is what we have. So this, essentially this agreement states that for the four parts, the part A, B, C, and D, so part A being the water main work, which is a shared cost between federal dollars, state dollars, and city dollars. Part B, which is 100% city, which is sanitary sewer and parking lane pavement work. Part C, which is again, is the downtown streetscape items, that's another shared federal, state, and city. And then part D is the irrigation and lighted street sign work, which is 100% city, city cost. So essentially, it's the city, if, for consideration is that the city would agree that MDOT could do the work and that agreeing to the percentages based on the part A, B, C, and D, as I just spoke, as you'll notice, the numbers, and we provided some supplemental information to council, the numbers are, the numbers that are actually in the agreement are, on a cost estimate, the most recent cost estimate before it went to bid, as you can see from the results, the cost estimate was not quite, just a little under 9.7 million and the actual bids came at, in about, just under 11.7 million. So a 15% increase across the board. For us, the sewer of significance, of course, the sewer was, was about, I think it's about 46%, I think that's sort of having my.
Correct.
Increase over the cost estimate. And then the actual streetscape items were actually a little bit less, which I guess overall is a good thing. And then the irrigation and lighted street signs came in high. So having said that, so while those numbers aren't correct, again, based on the percentages and we do have the correct numbers here, but there's not, there's not enough time to turn this around, you have them go back through all the channels that has to go, would have to go through at MDOT and get back, because the other thing is, MDOT cannot award until the city approves this. So having said that, there would be additional dollars through the general fund for, for the irrigation and lighted street signs and then signage, and then the sanitary sewer would see, would see that increase. Part of, part of the reason why it's, the sanitary sewer was those numbers weren't in place yet when we, after we approved, as you may recall, a lot of work was concentrated on the streetscape items in that budget. So while they're doing the work for us, that cost, as I said, is 100% city and so there wasn't, we didn't bring a budgeted number prior like we did with the streetscape, for instance. And that was also similar to the irrigation in that initially I had thought that that was a eligible item under the grant, but it is not. So, but even so, the estimate was, you know, the estimate was about $80,000 for that, for the irrigation and it came, the bid came in at a little over $130,000, so. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Because of the importance of this issue and the complexity, I'm going to ask, I'm going to actually work my way from one side of the dais to the other to entertain any questions that council members have unless they're, unless they're objections. So I'll put you on the spot this time and I'll start at the other end next time, Ms. McClellan. Do you have any questions for Mr. Campbell regarding this, this motion and his memo dated, I believe, March the 9th?
Just, I think I had clarification from, in a conversation we had earlier, but the design work, if they need to come back and answer questions and that kind of thing, can you explain that process the way you explained it to me earlier with, we're not going to necessarily incur fees, but we possibly could?
Sure, sure. So typically speaking, MDOT would be responsible for their construction engineering to make sure that things are done properly and we would be responsible for our own, but because these two projects are so intermingled and the same contractors doing the work, they have said, as it states in my memo, that they will allow us to utilize Fishbeck, which is Fishbeck Thompson and Carron Huber, who they've hired for their construction engineering, because I believe, if I remember correctly. because I believe, if I remember correctly, MDOT has a policy that says you can't use the same firm that designed it to do construction engineering, and so, for the, for the overall. And they will certainly, Fishbeck will still talk with, with, and consult with AECom, who did the design, not only for MDOT but for the city, but we, so MDOT's going to allow us to piggyback a little bit on that as well, to a certain extent, as well as, they do have AECom on a, under contract to facilitate and to help out with, or I shouldn't say facilitate, but to help out with any reviews for the, for any portion, but also the streetscape. So they've said we could do that. If it goes above and beyond that, then we would, we would need to do our own, and staff at this point in time would recommend, we would, it would be on an hourly basis with AECom if something were to come up.
Anything else, Councilwoman? No? Mr. Gierba?
No, I had the concerns about the increased cost of the sewer and the irrigation, but with the sewer, we know that's coming out of the sanitary sewer fund, so that always has its potential possibility of being underestimated. We just don't know what that kind of thing, so that is my concern. I am kind of a little bit worried about the irrigation aspect, but I know that the grant, being that it's less than what we anticipated, will hopefully be able to offset some of our other costs. The only other thing is, I'm glad that the, I didn't realize that the federal portion of this is covering the water main.
A big portion, yes, sir.
Which I didn't realize, that was, that's a good savings for the city.
Yes.
In respect, even though it is tax dollars, but I think that's a good trade-off for us when we look at this.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Tahar, anything?
Just, just to be perfectly clear, what we are, if we approve this, what we're approving tonight is the relative shares of all of the funding and the contract, not actual amounts.
Do you want to comment on that, Mr. Campbell?
Sure. Well, again, as I said, the, the amount in here is the actual cost estimate, but you know that you have them before you, so we have an understanding of what those are going to be. Some may go up, some may go down, some may stay that, you know, just like any project, when you start digging and breaking things open, and so, so this is, so, this is a good, so the 1.442,143 of city share for those four items, that should be a very, a good number for, for our project. Like I said, that, just like with any, especially a project of this magnitude, like we've seen with, with our Phase 1 and 2 of the improvements to the ways for our treatment plan, for instance, we do have change orders from time to time. So I would see this as very similar, probably.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Dillon?
Also, for clarification, I just want to confirm that what we're approving is an increase to the bid amount, but we are not changing any of the work plans. We are not decreasing anything at this point. We are keeping it as bidded out.
Correct. For a minute.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Seo, last but certainly not least?
Questions have been answered.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else? Give you all one last chance. No? Okay, how about, I guess this motion probably isn't going to generate much discussion, since it's just acknowledging receipt of the memo, but I'll ask the question. Well, then if there's no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to approve or not to approve contract number 15555566 between the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, and the City of Celine for grant funding participation of the US-12 reconstruction project, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the contract and project resolution?
Move to approve and authorize.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar, and that's seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Any discussion? Mr. Gierba, please.
When do we anticipate the actual start date now?
I would say most likely early to mid-April is the hope.
I mean, we're already going through it, but I was wondering when the big project's going to hit.
Exactly, yes.
Mid-April. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
The present work that's being done is being done by DTE?
Correct. Some...
Gas line?
Right. Preliminary work to relocate some gas lines and some power line, power poles, so they can get, they can be out of the way for the, when the contractor, hopefully when they, well, there might be a little bit of overlap, but they'll have most of the work done.
Ms. McClellan?
So the people from MDOT are coming on March 29th for the meeting, and then I know at the last open house that they had, there was some talk about, or maybe it was one of the meetings, there was some talk about doing assessments of some of the historic buildings on Henry Street ahead of the project to, to be able to check after the project whether or not foundations were impacted. Is that going to happen?
It's actually happening the same day.
The same day as the open house?
As the open house.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, the, I know the MDOT and/or the contractor, is my understanding, will be doing that for folks that would allow them, because obviously they need permission to, you know, on private property, but also I know through Celine Main Street, I think, I want to say, I'm not, I want to say up to maybe eight building owners in the Main Street district could have, well, it could be more than that, but I think they were helping to incentivize up to six or eight properties in the district that they were going to hire a structural engineer that specialized in historic structures that would come in and do that assessment for those owners.
If citizens want to be put, to have that assessment done, where, would they, would they contact you, or who do they contact?
Well, they would kind of, MDOT, but, but if they want, if they, you know, if they wanted to, they could contact the DPW office. Thanks, Jeff. So, so the DPW department, we can pass that along.
And so they talked to Priscilla, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Seo, please.
Just to more thoroughly put out the word one more time, the MDOT open house, it's going to be on, is it Tuesday, March 29th?
Correct. March 29th.
2:00 PM?
5:00 to 7:00.
5:00 to 7:00, okay.
I don't think we get a whole lot of people there at 2:00 PM.
No, I didn't either, but...
At Liberty School.
At Liberty School.
Same location as, as the previous one.
Very good. So people might have questions about detour routes and what's actually going to be done, and when it's going to start and when it's going to finish. It'd be a good place to come with your ideas and questions. Well, ideas are pretty well done, but questions?
Mr. Gierba?
Because we haven't really talked about it, but the increase and what we anticipated, I think it's just appropriate for us to kind of say that we knew that this potentially could happen, we're not where we were five or six years ago, where construction projects were far and few between, even Ann Arbor was facing a huge area with the increase over that. I think from our perspective, that this is going to be a 30-year plan. The aspects of the sewer and some of these other pieces, I think, are going to be well valued as we put them in and the cost going forward. Yes, there are potential other things we could do, but I think this is one of our key items, and this additional cost is something that's valued, and that we should be, as a community, proud to invest in our infrastructure at this, at this type of level.
Very good. Thank you. Yes?
Just, at least I find it interesting, nobody else may, but if you indulge me, the point of interest to me, as you mentioned, Mr. Gierba, about Ann Arbor and the recent Stadium Boulevard project that they went out to bid and it came back really high, and they, they pulled it back for redesign, well, the low bid for that project is the same low bid for this, and I'm, I'm actually grateful for that, because I'm, I'm making, speculating here, but I don't know that they would have done two large projects like that, because, so if they would have gotten that project, they obviously may not have bid on this one, so the next low bid was, so instead of 11, they say 11.6, was another 11.8 or 11.9, something like that, so it was even more expensive.
Yeah, so benefiting from their potential problem. That's good.
Anything else? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahar to approve, been properly moved, excuse me, by Tahar, seconded by Dillon, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to discussion items. Commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. Ms. Tahar?
Yes. The Arts and Culture Committee met today, and we are moving forward with two new collaborative projects, one with the 212 Arts Center for an art installation, and a temporary art installation around the city. Stay tuned, it should be a lot of fun. And then also, a collaborative project with the Friends of the Library, and potentially also the Historical Society, when we talk to them, for an item for the sesquicentennial theme. And then, thirdly, I would say, the Arts and Culture Committee this week, or at tonight's meeting, we approved or received a resignation from, from one of our committee members who could not attend the meetings any longer, and so the Arts and Culture Committee is looking for one or two more new members. If anyone is interested, you can get in touch with me for more information, or Sidney Baxter, who's the committee chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Additional committee, commissioner, task force reports? No? How about reports or other announcements? Mr. Seo was, was wise to announce the additional MDOT open house relating to the Michigan Avenue makeover. We strongly encourage participation and for people to come with their, their questions and concerns. Ms. Tahar?
Yes. An announcement from the Celine Lindenberg Friendship Committee. We anticipate our next visit of Celineans to Lindenberg in 2017. That's kind of advanced notice, but if you, if you have an interest in traveling to Lindenberg with this group, we encourage you to get involved in the Celine Lindenberg Friendship Committee now. And we're also looking forward to the visit this fall of 20 high school students from Lindenberg to the Celine High School. You'll, you'll probably be seeing and hearing more about them. So if, if anyone is interested in more information about the Celine Lindenberg Friendship Committee and what we do, you can refer either to me or to Jack Seo. Thank you.
Very good. Two things. The first, which is more significant, many of you will recall, hopefully most of you recall, I had a health and wellness forum here at City Hall on February the 11th, which was a Thursday. Councilwoman Tahar was there, along with Councilwoman Dillon and Councilman Seo, had a good discussion. I have tentatively scheduled my second follow-up meeting for April the 28th, which is the last Thursday of the month, from 9:00 until 11:00 AM here in council chambers. The same stakeholders and interest groups will be invited, along with many others, and I hope to have a more focused discussion on 24-hour emergency services, disseminating information in the community, along with mental health and substance abuse issues. So I am developing, as we speak, a press release, and will be sending out invitations probably in the next week or so, so you'll be hearing more information about that. I also sent you all a press release regarding my next coffee hour, which will take place at the library the second week in April, and Fire Chief Heft will be my guest to talk about changes to the fire department, specifically adding three new full-time firefighters. So if your schedules permit, I strongly encourage you and would welcome you to attend both events. Mr. Campbell, did you have something under reports and announcements?
Actually, a couple of things, if I might.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, so, so you should have before you three pieces of paper. One is, this is from when Dr. Bender came in, we did the team building, as well as the review and the update of the strategic plan. So the first one, City of Celine Council Mayor Workshop Summary, February 5th, those are, there's two, actually two documents. One is the, the information and notes and such that were discussed, and then also talking about the, you also talked about some sort of an ethics policy or, or agreement, or those types, various different, could take various different forms, but those were the words that came out, you may, you may recall that exercise.
Can I stop you there real quick?
Yep.
And actually, that's a useful tool. I am going to be taking that, along with some examples of ethics pledges, ethics policies, and ethics ordinances that I am supposed to be getting from Dickinson Wright. And so what I'd like to do, unless there's an objection, is probably tap two of you to assist me on a, on a work group that would begin drafting something, and then it would come back for council discussion. If the discussion was positive, then eventually it would come back for, for review and for adoption. So I just wanted to let you know that the ball is still in motion, and I hope to accomplish something tangible in the coming months. Sorry to steal your thunder.
Oh, not at all, not at all. Thank you. And then the, the third item is the draft of the, of the updated Community Vision 2 or 2020, the strategic plan. So what I would ask, if you all could begin reviewing that, and we could, you know, we could, depending on how much time you would all like, if you wanted, since we're only, it's only going to be another week, but so we could either next week have it for discussion, or wait till the first meeting in April, whatever, whatever you'd like to do.
What's your preference? Is everyone able to thoroughly review that and develop thoughts, questions, in a week's time, or would you prefer to wait till our first meeting in May? Can you do it in a week?
I think a week is fine.
Week? Can you do it in a week, Mr. Gierba? Weeks, okay? Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Seo?
Yes.
Okay.
And then...
Let me, well, let me stop you. Mr. Gierba, we'll try and include it on the work session. As you know, we have a work meeting to discuss the sale of 600 Maple. If we don't have time to discuss it at the end of the work session, then I would add it to the discussion portion of the agenda. Okay?
All right. And then also, just an FYI, for those of you that may not know, or maybe at home that would like to know, the details for Leslie's funeral, for Leslie Kehammer, tomorrow at Methodist Church, Pastor Tuttle will be officiating. The family portion begins at 10:00, and 11:00 is for the funeral service, and there'll be a luncheon following that the public are invited to attend.
If there are no other reports or announcements, we'll move on to an update on Public Act 269. You want to take the lead on that, Mr. Campbell?
Actually, I thought...
Oh, the clerk, is that, sorry?
Yep.
My apologies.
I actually went online and got some information from the MML, so I'm going to do a little overview. Senate Bill 571 was initially a non-controversial 12-page bill that had bipartisan support. On December 17th, 2015, the House brought the bill up for consideration, and a substitute version was adopted. They increased the 12-page bill to 53 pages in length. It included inserting new language into Section 57 of the existing act that deals with permissible and prohibited activities by the public bodies on election-related issues. The language was inserted without any notice to the League or other government, local government organizations, and moved without any public testimony. The bill was passed on December 17th and sent to Governor Snyder for his signature. Despite the many concerns raised about the bill, Governor Snyder signed it into law on January 6th, 2016. On February 23rd, the Michigan House passed Bill 5219 over to the Senate, following weeks of contentious debate over the original gag order provisions in PA 269 SB 571, and caused by the League and other local government organizations for a repeal of the offending language. The changes made to the bill on the 23rd do nothing to address the contention by MML and others that there remains no justification for the gag order provisions originally adopted in December. The attempts in this bill to bolt on new language to the already flawed and vague provisions from PA 269 do little to provide clarity and confidence to the communities around the state, as they seek to communicate with their residents about critical local ballot questions. The bill now moves to the Senate for further consideration. MML is urging communities to contact your legislators, senators, urging them to repeal the new language added to Section 57 by PA 269.
Thank you for the update. Any questions?
So do we need to do another...
We've... We've sent in our objection, and it's been included in with the MMLs, and I, I'm going to contact the MML to find out what else we can do.
Okay. To maybe give another update at a future meeting?
Yep.
Very good.
If I, if I may, ma'am.
Let me grab Ms. Tahar real quick, and then, then I'll get to you, Mr. Campbell. Ms. Tahar?
And I would say, you know, in, in the meantime, absent official action on our part as a council, there's nothing to prohibit any of us from getting, from getting directly in touch with our legislators on this matter.
The same would apply to, to private citizens who may be watching about, watching this or reading about it in the future.
Absolutely.
Mr. Campbell?
That was exactly what I was going to say.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, we'll get an additional update. Thank you for the, your work on that, Clerk Royal. Here's something exciting. How about the sidewalk replacement program? Mr. Fordyce?
Nothing quite as exciting as a slab of concrete. So the sidewalk replacement program, sometimes we refer to that as Phase 2 of our sidewalk program. This is the part where slabs that cannot... This is the part where slabs that cannot be fixed by the cutting program that we had will actually be demolished and replaced. So we sent out letters in November informing residents that where properties, owners of properties where deficient sidewalk had been identified in our survey, notified them that they had deficient sidewalk, set the July 1st deadline for repair, and, you know, gave them information about the ordinances and pertinent issues like that. Since then, received a number of inquiries from property owners, looking for some guidance and making some suggestions, and also, as we've worked through this and gained some information, suggesting some fairly significant changes and improvements to this Phase II of the program here. The first one, which I think is pretty straightforward and logical, is changing the deadline for deficient sidewalk within the MDOT construction zone. So there are a number of properties within there that received notices. A lot of that sidewalk is scheduled for replacement as part of the US-12 reconstruction. I suspect some more of it will be damaged during the construction, and it would also be very difficult to have MDOT in there, this one-lane detour, and then additional private contractors in there, so...
Let me stop you right there, just so we get consensus on all the points that you bring up. Is there any objection to that, or first of all, any questions for Mr. Fordyce regarding that suggestion? That seems perfectly reasonable to me. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. You've got your consensus on that?
The second one is very similar. Extending the deadline along the Henry Street detour route won't be quite as congested as the MDOT construction zone, but will have a significant amount of traffic moving through there, and having little private construction projects alongside the road, I think, would be disruptive to the traffic flow.
Well, it's not technically a construction zone. I actually was considering that as part of the scope, so I'm fine with that as well. Any objections to that?
No.
Okay. So just to be clear, Mr. Fordyce, then, those property owners who received a letter back in November would receive an additional letter?
Yes.
Okay. And what is, how much of an extension are you going to be providing?
I was proposing a year, so it would move to July 1 of 17, which should give, you know, this project time to wrap up, will know the ramifications of sidewalk damage and replacement, and then that'll give them the early construction season of 17. This one is not really a change, but more of an informational item. The re-inspections to determine whether or not a city-owned tree is the cause of any particular sidewalk defect. Those should be complete by the end of March, and those folks will receive, also receive an additional notice, letting them know whether or not, let them know the findings of those inspections.
And if I'm stealing your thunder, I apologize, because you and I spoke about this last week, because I got a few contacts in my office. So an individual or a property owner who received a letter back in November, if it's determined by staff that a deficient sidewalk is their responsibility to replace and/or repair, they will see some sort of spray-painted symbol on that sidewalk square, is that correct?
Yeah, the sidewalks will be marked, and then they'll get a follow-up, either a phone call, email, or a letter, depending on how we...
If they don't already know. Obviously, most of them are probably pretty obvious.
A lot of them are pretty obvious, but some of them are not. Particularly the cross-slope issue, where we have excessive cross-slope. Often, those slabs are in perfectly fine shape, but they're tipped too far out of one side, and that's difficult for a lot of people to see that, so...
Please, Mr. Gierba.
What about damage that occurred from trees that are no longer there?
That's a little more difficult to assess, but we have pretty good records of where city trees were, and there's often some signs there, so we can most often figure that out without too much difficulty. And then the biggest change they're proposing, and this has been requested by probably at least 80% of the people who have called me with questions about the program, is that we're proposing to let people, let property owners sign a commitment to pay, and then have the city bid that with our work, and perform those repairs, and then basically send folks an invoice. So it would not be an assessment, but it would be, you know, an upfront commitment from the property owner to pay the invoice. And there's a little bit of, I don't know, perhaps risk on the property owner's part in that we won't have those prices until after the project is bid, but we're going to need those commitments prior to the bidding, so that we can get our quantities down.
But it's clear they would benefit from the city leveraging the economies of scale.
The economies of scales are very significant in sidewalk work, especially when you're down in the, like, the one slab, two slab...
So what's our pledge or commitment to a property owner who signs that agreement, that we will have their sidewalks repaired and replaced within, obviously, it's not a calendar year, two or three years?
Yes. Yeah, well, we're looking at quarters, doing a quarter of the city, so a four-year cycle.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Gierba?
And in some cases, there are failed driveways. Can property owners have those repaired at the same time, or are we only going to allow just the sidewalk?
Our program would be exclusively sidewalk, but, you know, we certainly wouldn't prohibit private deals between the property owner and the contractor. So they would have, you know, if a homeowner had a bad driveway, they want it done at the same time as the sidewalk, and that certainly would be ideal. We could give them the contact information with, of the contractor, to make those private arrangements.
Okay. But possibly not initiate the same pricing, or whatever?
Well, driveway work's a little bit different, I mean, than sidewalk work, so the unit prices might be different, but we could, I'm trying to think of how we do it, but we could write something into the RFP.
I'm just thinking, because we've done that in some construction projects, where we replace both the sidewalk and the failed driveways, and so...
Yeah.
It would be beneficial to the property owners if that could happen at the same time, so...
Mm-hmm.
Not driveways, I'm talking about the...
Oh, the approach.
The apron.
Okay, okay.
Because that is in the city right way.
I would agree with that. I think some verbiage should be in the RFP, Jeff. Is there any objections to that? No? Okay. Do you have anything further, Mr. Gierba? Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Fordyce? Mr. Seo?
Two. Mr. Fordyce, you say it's a four-year cycle. Who bears responsibility for liability if there's a trip and fall or something? Is it the city, or is it the adjacent property owner?
It's, by our ordinance, it's the adjacent property owner. I think by case law, it's whoever has money, yeah.
Please, Mr. Campbell.
They'll name both. Typically, they will. I mean, that's typically how it happens, is they'll, if it is in front of a private, they typically will name both in a suit.
So I guess what I was going to suggest, then, is that if we do offer them the ability to enter into the city's sidewalk repair program, it probably need to be noticed that there's also the potential for liability in that intervening period, if somebody should trip and fall over that sidewalk, even though they've already made some kind of an arrangement with the city to have it repaired in the future.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah. And there's some ramifications with tax liens and invoicing and services, so city attorneys working on the language of what this commitment to pay would look like.
Did you have an additional question, Mr. Seo?
I was just going to also suggest that, you know, maybe as a remedy, and I'm sure the attorneys are probably already looking at that, can this be attached to taxes if it's unpaid, if people sign a commitment and then do not pay?
That, yeah, that was one of the key factors in the agreement, to make that possible.
Anything else, Mr. Seo?
No.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Tahar?
Yes, so you said approximately 80% of the people who have contacted you have asked for the availability of this option. Will it be offered to everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so those 20% who perhaps didn't think of it would also have the option of joining in?
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Gierba?
Solve that 20%, say 5% don't want to do anything. How do we handle those?
If we have someone who doesn't sign on to the program and doesn't do it on their own, they would go through our enforcement mechanism, which would have the city do the work, and then it would be a tax lien.
And that'll happen at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be in the same cycle.
Any other questions? Let me emphasize this for the public's benefit, and Mr. Fordyce and I spoke about this last week, because my office has received some calls regarding the letter that would have been received probably in late November. But, and I'll speak from personal experience here, I'm the type of person that, had I received one of those letters, even though I could have benefited from some cost savings by the city leveraging the economies of scale, I would be apt to just do it on my own. And so I was talking to a neighbor recently who has two sidewalk squares that are cracked and pitted in desperate need of replacement. And what I told her is what I would tell any property owner who's inclined to do the work independently, separate from the city, is when you call, my cousin does concrete, when you call one of these contractors, try and find some other projects, some other concrete work that may need to be done around the house. Because replacing one or two squares is going to be, at least in my opinion, pretty significant. We're talking maybe upwards to $1,000. So I had two sidewalk squares replaced probably about eight years ago when I replaced my driveway, not just the extension, the actual driveway, and then the interior of the garage, and the cost to replace those sidewalk squares was almost nothing. And the contractor basically gave them to me for free. So it's just something I want to emphasize, that if you're inclined to do this independently, and you call a concrete contractor, and you say, "All I want is for you to replace two sidewalk squares," or three, the cost is going to be quite significant. So again, if you're inclined to do it independently, try and identify some other projects around the house or around your property that are in need of repair. Anything else for Mr. Fordyce? Mr. Dillon?
I have a quick question. If someone chooses to do it on their own, whether they do it or they hire it out, does the city go back and inspect that work? Do they have to show proof of who did it? I mean, how do you know that it was quality work?
Yeah, they need a right-of-way permit. So there's a permit process for work within the right-of-way, so they need to get that, and then there'll be a form inspection and an inspection afterwards.
Okay, so the guy with this bag of quick crease is not going to cut it?
No.
Good. Thank you.
So what you're really saying is our process hopefully will be more beneficial to the homeowners?
It should be a win all around. You know, the walking public will get a better product, the property owner will get a less expensive and less hassle product, and, you know, it's really no additional work for what I'm doing, because I've got a bunch to do anyway, so...
Very good. Excellent. Well, Mr. Fordyce, appreciate your work on this. As has been noted in the past, we haven't done, the city hasn't done something comprehensive citywide since, I think, the late 80s, early 1990s. So it's been nearly 25 years. So a long time coming, but important, and once this project, and the scope of the project is complete, I'm confident it will be beneficial on many levels. So thank you again. If there's nothing further on sidewalk replacement, we move on to DDA-TIF update. Are you taking the lead on that, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So speaking with our city attorney, Scott Smith, who's now been invited by the Senate Work Group to participate in their crafting of some language, so the, as of about 5:30, 6 o'clock today, this evening, when I spoke with him, so it appears that the House, the Senate, and now the governor's office through the MEDC are all taking their own direction or their own path on trying to do something different with the DDA/TIF, the tax treatment financing. And now, it's focusing on the DDAs, because they're fairly prominent, but they utilize the same tax treatment finance vehicle for revenue, just like our TIFA, or RODFA, or Brownfields, those types of things. So it appears that there will be something done, so there's no surprise when I tell you that, but most likely, it's not going to happen until lame duck. And no bills have been circulated. I mean, nothing has been passed out of committee or anything. There's been some drafts of some things that have been passed around. The one at the House level that I'm familiar with, doesn't, it talks about additional reporting, transparency type of information. It talks about limiting, I believe it says something to the effect of limiting the TIF plan to 20 years, and then after that, I believe you could have one additional five-year term, I believe, or there are additional, but no longer than five-year terms. But at the same time, so, but during the 20 years, there's no opt-out, meaning that all the other taxing jurisdictions that are participating, such as the county, or the community college, or the district library, et cetera, that are currently, we're capturing a portion of those tax dollars to do, to put towards projects in our community, there's currently is not an opt-out provision. I think there is, if you go, just like there is now, if you change the district, for instance, if you want to expand the district, or change the district boundaries, then you can opt out. But any case, I don't know exactly what the Senate or the administration, which direction they're going to go for sure, and who knows if the House is going to continue on this path or do something different. But that is, unfortunately, that's the best that I can, that I have to report.
Very good. Any questions? Let me, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, a bill or bills, if they were to be introduced in the House, will come out of local government. Currently, the Senate, or, excuse me, currently, the Republican Chair and the Democrat ranking member are working collaboratively on a package, which, for the most part, is pretty innocuous, and would do essentially what Mr. Campbell just articulated. I can tell you that if the Senate or the governor start to push for a bill that would allow opt-outs, I believe that would be devastating to Celine and a great many other communities. And so I would recommend strong action by this council and other bodies, in terms of contacting our rep, our senator, and the governor, to urge opposition to something of that nature. So we will keep you in the loop, and of course, if you have any questions at any time, let Mr. Campbell know, and if anything moves, or changes, or involves between now and next Monday, perhaps we could even have Mr. Smith update us at the council meeting on the 21st. Okay? Very good. All right, well, if there's nothing further, under the discussion portion of the agenda, we move on to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. There any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments? Is there any other business to come before the Celine City Council this evening? Please note that our next meeting is a week from this evening, on the 21st, with a work meeting beginning at 6:00 p.m. to discuss the sale of 600 Maple. If we have time, we will also discuss the, our strategic framework, our goals and objectives. If not, that'll be bumped as a discussion item. And then our following meeting will be on April 1st, with a work meeting beginning at 6:00 p.m. to talk about the budget, and then a regular meeting at 7:30. We already excused the absence of Mayor Potem Road, so at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:57 p.m. Moved by Mr. Gierba, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.